Let's call the December eighth meeting to order. George, take your role.
Colonel Evans?
Here.
Mr. Rosen?
Here.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Here.
Mr. Miko?
Here.
Mr. Neso?
Here.
All present.
Stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is part of the meeting where we discuss our district goals. We've got a big crowd out here today, so that's good. We get to talk about our goals. We'll talk longer today about our goals. No, we won't. We have three goals. Student achievement, which is first and foremost, and we have financial prudence. And that means we handle the taxpayers' money as if it was ours, and we try to maximize every educational dollar that we can get out of that. And we also have community involvement. So those three things we balance in every decision we make in this board meeting will relate to those three goals. So with that, we'll move forward into recognition, because we've got some great people to recognize today.
Thank you, Mr. Neso. Yes, we do. We definitely have some outstanding groups and students and staff to recognize. So let's start off with Mr. Mark Smithberger, principal of Strongsville High School, who is going to introduce our Ohio State qualifiers for our boys cross-country team. Mark?
Mr. Reiba, Mrs. Pelco, and the school board, thank you for having us this evening. It's always a pleasure to be here. And as Mr. Neso said, we are first and foremost thinking of student achievement. Today, we're here to celebrate some student achievement from our boys cross-country team. They did an outstanding job this year. They qualified for the state meet. They're coached by Mr. Mike Knappich. As the head coach, assistant coach is Mr. Rick Ventura. This is Mike's sixth year as the head boys cross-country coach, and three of the last four years, he made the state meet. So we are establishing a tradition of success here, and these young men in front of you have upheld that tradition. I started trying to calculate the number of miles they ran this year, and I stopped when it got to the thousands. And that's thousands, they're well above a thousand. So 29 young men were on the team. And Mr. Knappich, in a given week, how many did they run mid-season? How many miles did they run?
Depending on their grade level and running levels, and they're running anywhere from 35 to 70-some a week.
That's 35 to 70-some miles per week, not per month or year, like some of us might plan our workout strategies. So you can-
I used to be able to beat them all, but I can't beat any of them.
I've never beaten any of them, and that probably won't ever happen, Mr. Reiba. So if that's my evaluation, I'm going to do very poorly on that part of it.
We're noting that.
What's that? Thank you. But I wanted to make it clear how much time they put into it. And like all of our other high school athletes, this is really a 12-month-a-year commitment. They don't just start running in August and start running 70 miles a week. They run all summer, they run all spring. I'm sure some of them are currently running in the winter, and they run outside. I see them bundled up, and they're all over town, and I see them in the summer, and it's 95, and they're running still. So their hard work commitment really does pay off. So, guys, thank you. Congrats to you guys personally, congrats to your family for supporting you and being a part of that, because we know parents, it doesn't just happen because of, they just show up one day, they've had a lot of support at home. We appreciate that. We know you buy them shoes and workout clothes and host pasta dinners. Oh, there's so many pasta dinners. That's a huge part of cross-country, I found out over the years. And that is really, we really appreciate that. So congrats to you as families. Thank you for all you do. So without further ado, I want to introduce Mr. Mike Knappich, our coach, to talk about a little about the season. Thank you, Coach.
Can you hear me without the mic? That'd be great. Okay. I got a really bad cold. I haven't been sick in about two or three years, and I got something from my daughter. So anyhow, I would like to express appreciation to everyone for honoring these guys. These guys are awesome. Thank you, Carl Neso and the Board of Education, Superintendent Cameron Reiba, Principal Mark Smithberger, Athletic Director Andy Jawon and the Strongsville Boosters. I'm really fortunate that I have the opportunity to be associated with the young men here. This is the, I had the girls program for 22 years before I started with the boys six years ago, and this is the 16th team that I've had the pleasure to go to state with, and every one of them is unique and each one is special. And when we had our awards night a few weeks ago, I think everybody in the room knew how special this particular team was. While there are seven guys here, I would like to acknowledge that all 29 boys on our team are contributors during the season. We run all summer. We have our own camp, it's a motivation and running camp called Camp Craziness on the shores of Lake Erie. Team dinners prior to every meet and much, much more. The parents recognize the cohesiveness of our program, and they reach out and help make it even better. This year's team entered the preseason with some question marks and some challenges. We began the season as a decent team, but after the first few meets, we really did not fall into the category of elite. The guys just kept working hard and followed our plan, and they've known, they know, I think they believe that if you follow the plan, you're going to be running better down the line, and hopefully things will fall into place. We gained momentum a little at a time. When the postseason arrived, we were running really well. We coasted through the district and onto the first-time-new, they called it a superregional, where all the best teams in northern Ohio would be competing. Our frontrunners, senior Jake Papish and junior Brian Wyler led the way with the best races of their careers, and the rest of the guys did their job as well. We were official spoilers that day in the qualifier for the state. Teams like Mener, Wadsworth, and St. Edward had wasted us pretty badly back in early September, and, but this day was the Mustangs. After the race, there was a lot of talk among coaches and teams of how Strongsville was the surprise of the Division One race. These guys really did not ever doubt themselves. They just went about their business, week in and week out, and now we are celebrating their state qualifying endeavor. So without further ado, I would like to introduce each runner. And the board and school system have a nice certificate of recognition for all of them, and as well as a letter from the administrative offices, so they can receive those when I call them up here. We only had one senior on our team too, which bodes well for next year. Our lone senior, he was an all-Greater Cleveland Conference honors winner, all-district. He was an individual and team-state qualifier and our number-one finisher at the state meet, Jake Papish. Next young man is a junior. He was all-Greater Cleveland Conference, all-district, and an individual and team-state qualifier as well. We looked for him to lead our team next year, Brian Wyler. He's obviously not a big muscular guy, but the biggest muscle in the body, in that chest, that heart, is huge. Junior, this next guy's a junior. He was all-district and a team-state qualifier, great addition to our team this year, Joe Judah. I thought it was Steve Jobs when I saw him today. Next up is a junior. Overcame some early-season injuries that he obtained during the spring track season and came through when it was most important at the end of the season, team-state qualifier Jared Howson. We have one more junior. This guy's known as the workhorse of the team, one of our hardest workers ever, team-state qualifier Shane Healy. We had a sophomore on the team. He was our most improved runner this year. He was a decent runner last year, but non-entity as far as a championship team runner, improved by leaps and bounds. He was all-district and a team-state qualifier, Matt Malloy. And finally, our last guy is just a freshman, and we're hoping that he ends up with four state experiences. As a young runner, he held up very well through a long and grueling season, like Mr. Smithberger says, it's a lot of miles, it's a lot of beating on your body and all, and he was a state-team qualifier this year, Tyler Howson. He's also doubling as a waiter today. I'd like to thank everyone. I didn't know these things were so popular, like standing-room-only. Our entire team was first-class this year, but I have to say something, the families are really first-class too, the amount of work that they put in and contributions, and they love to be a part of it, and we have a nice blend with the parents and the kids as well. So thanks, everybody.
Coach Knappich, just stay for one moment. I just want, you know, we're really focusing on this year. We really want to, we want to put a lot of energy into the athletics, right? So we want to make sure we do well, and you're a shining example of what it takes to be a great coach and to build a great team. And I just want you to know that you have this board's full support, and if there's anything that you need or any recommendations, or anything you think that we can do to help you help these fine young men, please let us know.
I really appreciate, I need a company car.
A company car.
Put a Mustang on it, it'd be great.
Cameron, Cameron, give them your keys.
I appreciate that.
I don't have a company car, and there's no car.
I appreciate that, Mr. Neso.
Great job.
Good job.
Thank you, Mike. Once again, I had the chance to say congratulations to the young man as I walked in, and, you know, I've had the opportunity to work for a few other districts, and I just want, you know, we get used to these things in Strongsville. You know, other places I worked, we sent one student down to state, and that was a big deal. And to take a look at the number of athletes that are here, and freshmen all the way up to seniors and the youth, all we need is the Howsons to have a few more kids.
Yeah.
I think we've got a legacy. So just congratulations, guys, on a wonderful season, and just know how proud you make us, not only for what you accomplished at the state tournament this year, but how proud you make us, just what wonderful young men you are. And Jacob, after all these years from when you were a young man in Maraski, it's good to see, it's good to see you guys all growing up, to see what wonderful young men you've become. So congratulations, everyone. So we usually wait to the end, but our high school students and parents, we have a couple more presentations, so feel free at this time to exit and enjoy the rest of your evening.
I'm sure you got some homework.
As we're transitioning our athletes out, Ms. Pelco is going to get ready to lead a presentation on a recognition for our Strongsville Civic team. One of the goals in our Strongsville's 2020 plan is obviously community engagement, as Mr. Neso talked about, but how do we build and establish and foster meaningful relationships between our district, our community, our local organizations and businesses? And Strongsville Civic team is a shining example of what that looks like in practice. So, Ms. Pelco, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Reiba. Good evening, everyone. It is my true honor to be here tonight to talk about the Strongsville Civic team. It's truly a passion of mine, and the things that we've done over the last three-plus years is just remarkable, and I can't thank enough this team. And we have many of our members here this evening, and I'm going to have them stand in a second, but this team has been amazing, helpful, giving advice, and supporting us through this journey. So I would like them just to stand and be recognized for a second, so you can see who's in the audience tonight. We have Tom Reno from the Optimist Club, I can just stand, Ken Duner, Rotary, I don't think he's here tonight, George Rosen, Rotary and board member, Jim Korecki, VFW, Manjeet Kuban, Rotary, Lena Knight, Rotary, Vicki Maloney, Women's League, Ken McEntee, Rotary, Jeff McFadden, Optimist Club, Gary Munson, City Club, Carl Neso, Board of Education, Paul Sodda, Rotary, Terry Toth, City Club, Tim Svanczek, VFW, and we also have our district team, Will Bambrick, Strongsville Middle School Counselor, Denise Kando, Maraski and Kinzner Elementary Counselor, Heather Kolblens, Middle School Counselor, Steve Dietrich, Middle School Principal, Kristin Gerber, Chapman Elementary and Kinzner Elementary School Counselor, myself, and Alyssa Ray, School Counselor, Middle School, and Eric Shively, School Counselors for Sarar and Whitney. So as you can see, we have a great team here, and thank you very much for being here this evening. You can have a seat. So four years ago, we began this journey, and we had a little idea. We had a little meeting with three members of Rotary, which was Lena, Manjeet, and Paul at the time, and we were concerned. We were concerned about our kids. We were concerned about our students harming themselves, talking, having thoughts of, you know, thoughts of, I don't know what else to do, so my last resort may be harming myself. And that was our initial cause, to ensure that our students were safe, and that we were doing everything we could possibly do as a school district to ensure that. And so that's where the idea came from, and this is a slide of our very first meeting we had to get this civic team going, and this is back in 2013, where we kind of did our pitch of why we needed the help. So with that, I am going to call Manjeet Kuban up to say a few words.
Evening. Thank you, Jenny, and the rest of the civic team, giving me the opportunity to speak. First, Jenny's going to talk about the program, but I'd like to thank the counselors, administration, who designed the program, and the success that it has achieved, and especially the five members of the civic clubs, the Strongsville Rotary, the Strongsville City Club, Strongsville Optimist Club, Strongsville VFW, Post 3345, and Strongsville Women's League. And initially, like Jenny said, there were a few of us who met for the first time to talk about the program. Then on December 9, 2013, a meeting was held at Altenheim to engage the civic community to participate in an effort led by Middle School Counselors Administration and Strongsville Rotary. At the meeting, city administration led by Mayor Tom Percyak, then-school superintendent John Kropinski articulated their support for the program. That program was designed by counselors and support from civic community to fund the incidentals was necessary. As this program is for the benefit of Strongsville residents and all the kids that will be our future leaders, it was a win-win situation for the civic team to participate. Any one civic group may have funded the program by itself, but the idea was to have most civic groups collaborate and make it a one joint effort amongst all of them. There were over 25 people at the meeting, and I remember George Rosen was there, Carl Neso was there, and Richard Miko was there from the board. But I remember a story that Carl Neso shared at the meeting, where someone close to him had an issue, and had this kind of program been there, maybe the results could have been different. And the idea was that we have to be, if the civic groups were going to be involved, we had to be able to measure the results, and there had to be accounting for funds that we would be giving to them. And I couldn't tell you how pleased we are with the program, the results that we have seen, and some results we'll see down the road, but again, I thank all of the civic groups, Strongsville Rotary, the Optimist Club, the City Club, Women's League, and the VFW for participating. And if you are a member of a group that is not participating and would like to participate, please see any one of the members of the civic groups or talk to Jenny Pelco. Thank you.
So again, we started out by just wanting to help the most-at-risk student, and through our work together, we have come up with our mission is to support students in their social-emotional growth through positive proactive education and supports, and that really is our goal. At this time, I'm going to bring up Alyssa Ray. She is the Middle School Counselor, who is an integral part in getting this started, and I want her to explain years two and three.
All right, so year one, we came in, and we were really excited about this opportunity to be able to do this and be able to really help students. Our first year, we had started with a needs assessment, and we had assessed students, parents, and the staff to kind of see what are the needs of our students in our building. And we started there, because again, we were kind of looking more at a very at-risk group, and we wanted to expand that out to all students in the building and make it more proactive. So that is something that we've continued in year two and three, and even in year four, because we're kind of on year four at this point. So every year that we have started this, we've done a needs assessment at the beginning of the year, because each year, the needs of the students do change. Yes, overall, there are some developmental things that all students have in middle school, but we do see that sometimes maybe the seventh-grade class has some different needs than the eighth-grade class does, and we are using those needs assessments to help us build our programs and build our counseling activities. We also do pre-test, post-test surveys for our lessons to be able to collect data, because social-emotional health is a really tough thing to track data for. It's a lot of times, you're seeing the growth, and I know Manjeet had said, you know, some of the growth you're going to see far into the future, and we really hope we see that with our students and help them to be successful. And we also would look at our own data of, when we're meeting with students, what kind of trends are we seeing? Are we seeing a lot of self-harming concerns? Are we seeing a lot of peer issues where they're having a hard time getting along or not understanding how to solve conflicts? So we really do look at our data to support what we're doing in the program. It's also been very beneficial for us to be able to support the Positive Intervention Behavior Supports, PBIS, the initiative for the district. So we want all of our students to show that they're prepared, respectful, that they're inclusive, determined, and engaged. So the first, year two and three, we were actually able to purchase, I got some pictures to go along with this, t-shirts for every student in both Center Middle School and Albion Middle School. These were the Center t-shirts. We kind of had a theme for each school, where we wanted students to be proud of being heroes, being respectful in our school, and being the students that they need to behave appropriately and all of those types of things. So this was for Center, we were able to do that. We were also able to get banners. We had our students sign our banner to kind of show that they're going to be those students that are showing that pride, being respectful, being prepared. And this was Albians as well, and they did the same thing. So we were able to really incorporate that with students and give them some pride. There's something about getting a t-shirt as a student that really makes you feel special. So it was nice, on day one, they walk in and they're handed a t-shirt that they can use for that whole year and wear for that whole year. And it's very cool, because we still see them wear their shirts every so often from those first two years. We were able to get shirts this year, but that was actually through different funding. And we were also able to get these banners, again, to just kind of continue to instill that, so these are in the new middle school. They purchased them last year at Albion, and we were able to bring them, see the new building with us, so now we have that. And then also, we did do a lot of additional purchases to support our programs. Again, at the very beginning, we saw a lot of concerns related to students with self-harming behaviors or even considering suicide. So we did purchase a program called Signs of Suicide to address those concerns. It's a research-based program, and we do do a lesson on suicide with all of our students to help them support each other if they're seeing somebody that maybe they're seeing some red flags of depression, because we do see in research that peer support is a very, very strong way to get to students. We also had a holiday candle lighting that we started, I believe, in year two, and we're continuing that year-to-year. We have that as well this year. And basically, it's similar to a Blue Christmas, if you're familiar with what that is. So for students who maybe had somebody who had passed away in the past year, or even maybe it was more than a year ago, but it's just something that, it's a good time to recognize that and to be able to cope in a way that is healthy and manageable. We were able to give stress balls to every student, if you see that little star over there. Every single student in the school received those in year two, and they were very excited about it. Even, I still have some in my office, and students all the time see these and go, "These are really cool, we should get these again." So we're thinking about that. We were able to have a leadership academy over the summer, that we provided a scholarship, I believe, to a student to attend that, where they were able to learn some leadership skills. Parent presentations and workshops in year two, year, I don't know if it was year one or year two, they all blend together at some points, but we were able to do some parent coffee clashes, where parents came in and we were able to talk to them about, you know, topics of social media, topic of how to work with your student when it comes to issues that you may be seeing. And we also were able to purchase the Second Step Curriculum, which I think we're going to talk a little bit more about later on, but this was actually a huge step in our program, and to be able to work with all students in a proactive setting and be able to align our counseling program, starting in elementary school and going all the way up through high school. So really, in year three, we really had a lot of crossover between elementary and middle school and really building our relationship and being able to make sure that we're not repeating activities that they're doing, but we are building on what they've already learned in elementary school.
And so as Alyssa stated, you know, we quickly learned that being proactive and teaching, you know, ahead of the time, prior to there being a problem, would be the most effective. And one of the goals of the civic team was not only to be in the middle school, but to expand to the elementary and even the high school. And so that's just what we did. We expanded it to the elementary. And one of the most important things we can do is catch kids early, and teaching them the components of social-emotional learning, and you see them up there with self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills, responsible decision-making. You know, so often, we see school as the place of academics, but social-emotional learning is equally important. It's hard to teach students who are not coming to school feeling safe, feeling cared about, knowing how to deal with conflict, and so it's important that they have these skills, that they can work out differences, that they can understand each other and work together, especially as they grow and learn, and it makes learning math much easier for these students. So with that, I am going to have Kristin Gerber come up and talk briefly about the elementary, and while she's on her way up, I'm going to show you a quick video.
My job as an educator is to get all of my students to the same place every morning.
No matter how they've started their day.
No matter what mood they're in.
No matter what the circumstances of their lives.
And that place is-
Ready to learn.
By using a social and emotional learning program, I teach my students skills, skills they need to regulate their emotions and behaviors, so they can be ready to learn.
The difference between the beginning of the year and now is like night and day.
My students are really using the skills to help them learn in a focused way.
My students are behaving more respectfully.
You can actually see them building skills that help them get along better with others.
And when problems come up, they're now better equipped to solve those problems.
For more than 25 years, social-emotional learning programs have gained an impressive body of evidence, showing that foundational skills, like being able to take another person's perspective, managing emotions and behaviors, and solving problems, contribute- perspective, managing emotions and behaviors, and solving problems contribute to success in school and in life. Studies show that students enrolled in social-emotional learning programs scored at least 10 percentage points higher on achievement tests than peers who weren't enrolled. At the same time, discipline problems were cut in half. At Committee for Children, our programs draw from this well-established body of research to create engaging, teacher-friendly curricula.
So we are so thankful, as an elementary department, the three of us counselors, to have been brought in on this project, because we are able to see so many of our students. When I came to the district, this is my third year when I came, I was only able to visit three grade levels, and this year, I'm able to visit six because of our new programming. So it's great. Every student at the elementary level is getting some type of classroom guidance, which is amazing. This is a picture, several pictures, of the programs that we were working from before. You can see the years beside them, so a bit outdated. And as Alyssa mentioned, we were able to purchase the new Second Step program. This is a couple of the posters that are used to teach with the students. So this program is social-emotional learning, focuses on empathy, skills for learning, problem-solving, helping students calm down in the moment. And like I said, we're able to visit each and every classroom this year at every building. So each student is getting classroom guidance. Next year, we're kind of revamping the way that we're going to do it and visit all year long, every classroom at least once a month. So we're really excited, because the kids are getting to know us more. I know all the students in the school now, which is amazing, and we're just able to spend a lot more time in the classroom, which we're thankful for. So like Ms. Palco said, the goal of a social-emotional learning program is to teach students skills to regulate emotions, be able to manage their feelings at an early age, so that then, when the anxiety and angst of adolescence rears its head, they are able to manage that a little bit easier. And the students are really responding positively to the lessons thus far. As you can see, there's a couple of quotes about someone whose brother was annoying them, and they used the calm-down steps, and then he felt better. And students are using them at recess, so lots of issues at recess with fighting over soccer, football, you can't imagine it. But they're able to calm down a little bit and really take a step back and solve the problems using these steps. We're also able to use the lessons in small group settings and for individual sessions. So we're really trying to build a culture of this across the district at the elementary level, and then it also goes up to eighth grade. So elementary and middle school are using the same language, the same calming-down steps, so that we can kind of build that capacity throughout the district and then moving on up through the high school.
So as you can see, we are in year four right now. And the things that we are doing, again, as Alyssa and Kristin mentioned, the Second Step program is key. It really has helped us to build our curriculum and be consistent and systematic. And now we have it K through eight. And even through high school, we have been able to develop curriculum maps for guidance lessons. So no more is it, "I learn about bullying in second grade. I learn about it again in seventh grade. I learned about it again in ninth grade." It's systematic, and it's progressive, so that it's appropriate by the age level. And it's, we also take into account what the kids and the parents want by doing those surveys, so that helps as well. We have partnered this year with Nancy Lowry and Associates. They are local psychologists in town, and they have come in to help our most, our kids in most need and families and can do that wraparound service for those families. So they're not only working with the students, but the parents as well, which was another goal of the civic team, to involve the parents. Love and Logic Civic Team is sponsoring them to come and do some seminars with parents. We've surveyed our parents. We want to make sure that we're giving them what they need, at the time they need it, the location they need it. So we've done some surveys, and that will be coming, I believe, in February or March. Susan Fee, there are some flyers on the table here. She is coming, January 12th. She is a psychologist, and she will be talking on the topic of anxiety. That will take place at the middle school, January 12th at 7:00 PM. We have developed an at-risk transition and communication plan in conjunction with the high school to make sure that we are keeping track of students with whom the middle school is working with, elementary is working with, middle school is working with, and then the high school doesn't have to start from scratch, they realize what's going on with these students. And finally, one of the biggest things I know that was brought up in the civic team was, what do you do when the students are not in school? What can, what do they do if they have an issue? Who can they reach out to? And so we worked with our current program of Public School Works and created this button that is on every single school webpage where students can submit anonymously a report if they need help. So that is always there, and those emails come to the principals and come to myself and Mr. Reiba, and we address them if we need to. So everything being said, we have also incorporated this into our new and innovative instructional plan for the next three years. So not only is it just something we're doing on the side, but we've actually included it in our instruction that we're doing in our plan, and we will continue to build the capacity, not only in our students, but also our staff, by providing them professional development in these areas too. So thank you for listening. Do you have any questions for me at this time?
I just have a quick comment. Four and a half years ago, Manjeet and I were sitting at a table at Rotary, and we were just trying to figure out how we could start supporting this program. And to tell you how naive that we were, it was just an anti-bullying program. We were just trying to raise enough money to try to help some kids in the middle school. And what the administration has done, and it starts from the top down, Cameron and Jenny, thank you so much, because our little tiny idea, and yeah, sure, we reached out to some civic groups, and thank you guys very much for being here and supporting this, but we've provided an opportunity for children. And Strongsville's viewed as a more wealthy community, but we have plenty of children in this town that need help. And now we're providing them the opportunity and a face and the means of being able to go and get help. And that's important. And there were some statistics that were provided, and I remember Jenny, me, and just a few, Manjeet coming to see you at your office at Old Center Middle School. And some of the statistics and the numbers of children that are self-harming and cutting and have suicidal thoughts, it would amaze you. It was shocking. It was disturbing for us. And I think when you look at those things and what you guys have done, I want to say thank you to you guys as administration and counselors for helping our children, my children included, right? Because all those kids are grouped together into the civic groups. Without your guys' funding and support and ideas and the means of coming to our meetings and saying, "Hey, this is important for our kids," we wouldn't have a program that, again, it reaches a child from five years old to 18. We originally looked at it as just a program for middle school children, seven and eight, to stop bullying. But we've now, we've gone so much further than that. So thank you to everybody in the room for what we've done for our children. So thank you.
Nice job. Thank you.
I will say that over the last three-plus years, we have received over $20,000. And initially, it was supposed to last three years, and we've made it last four, due to, you know, spending wisely and making sure we had the advice of our civic team. So with that, I'd like you to come up and receive a certificate for your work. So Tom?
Oh, no, Tom, you've got to go through the gauntlet. Come on.
Just keep them coming, Jenny.
Denise? Denise Kandau? Yes, you.
Thank you.
Steve Dietrich? Kristin Gerber?
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Manjeet Kuban?
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Hey, Steve.
Lena Knight?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your company.
Thank you very much.
Pretty good.
Amen.
Vicky Maloney?
This is the least exercise you get.
Exactly.
That's true.
Thank you so much.
Penn McEntee?
See you tomorrow morning.
Thanks, Vicki.
Thank you for the support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gary Munson?
Thank you.
You made a big difference.
Thanks, Jen.
Appreciate it.
Alyssa Ray?
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
I appreciate it.
Thanks, all.
Thank you, Ken. We always appreciate your support.
Eric Shibley?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
And Terry Toth?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you once again.
Nice job. Thank you.
Thank you.
I owe you a check. You're involved everywhere.
Jenny, nice job.
You don't have to come down. You don't have to walk down.
I remember the first meeting, and Manjeet mentioned that touched my family, and it's, I remember the first meeting we had, and I remember how quickly everybody got on board. It wasn't like, there was no discussion, there was no, "Well, we don't know. What do we get?" It was just like, everybody was in. And it's just a tribute to how, what a great community we live in and the people who are there. And you see so many common faces out here that do so much, and I just want to thank you all. It's an incredible job. Who knows how much great work we've done, right? So, nice.
Yeah, we talked a lot, Mr. Nassau, about, you know, it's just so rewarding to take a look back and see all the work everybody has done. And, you know, we believe strongly that you get the right people in the right place at the right time, great things can happen, and that's just an example of that in action. So thank you to the civic team, our staff, our community members, Jenny, for still taking a lead in our district for this very important topic. And here's to the next three or four years and seeing what we can accomplish then. Now, I'm not going to excuse the rest of you. You guys have to stick with us a little bit longer, because we need to talk about our cool school. We always knew Whitney was cool, but now it's official. So unfortunately, Mr. Stacko had a family commitment. He could not be here tonight. But in his place, from Whitney Elementary School, music teacher Deb Gonzalez and art teacher Eileen Kerr are here to be recognized on behalf of the Whitney students and staff. So please come up on the podium and share the exciting news.
Thank you. I am Debbie Gonzalez, and this is Eileen Kerr. And we are the music and art team at Whitney Elementary. And again, Mr. Stacko wanted to, I see he's in the program, he's a lot taller than me, but he apologizes that he's not able to be here. We thank you so much for recognizing us, and we are so pleased to be recognized as the Fox 8 Cool School. Now, I've been in the district for 26 years, but only, this is my first year at Whitney Elementary. And Eileen, this is your second year? Second year, but five years in the district, correct? And I was kind of contemplating, you know, what makes a cool school? And I've only been there for a few months, but I can tell you that I feel like I know why we were selected. I believe a cool school happens when, number one, great students are being challenged to their fullest potential; number two, we have supportive parents who partner with the school; number three, we have a networking collaborative team of highly qualified teachers and support staff; number four, we have a guiding and supportive administrative team; and number five, a supportive community who helps provide resources for a safe environment with up-to-date facilities and technology. And on the front of your program, as I was going through these thoughts in my head, I realized this is our mission statement for Strongsville City Schools. So when we live in our mission statement, we are excellent, and we are so proud that we could do that. So they create a perfect storm, which not only promotes learning, but also opportunities to give back to our community. So at our school this year, our student council has a Giving Tree, and they're able to give back to those less fortunate. Even with a lot of students that come to our school are less fortunate, they are willing to give to those that are less fortunate, which I think is amazing. Mr. Stacko and our awesome PTA, they are providing enrichment assemblies all the time. Well, not all the time, but we've had a few, which remind students how to care for themselves and for others. And we also had an awesome opportunity this year to thank 60 Whitney veterans on Veterans Day. So we thought the best way to show you our cool school was to show you our segment that was highlighted on Fox 8. So thank you again for recognizing us, and this is Whitney's Cool School.
If you take pride in something, you will always care about it, whether you're working on a math problem, or reading your favorite book, or even listening to a great story.
All right, size of Piglet.
At this week's Cool School, Whitney Elementary in Strongsville, that pride goes beyond the classroom and out into the community.
I like being involved with the school and being able to help kids and showing pride to the other kids.
This is the Giving Tree. It's a school-wide project where students and staff work together to help people and animals in their neighborhoods. Showing pride is about showing kindness and caring about those around you.
Because you're just showing that you care about community and other people who don't have as much as you.
But this isn't Whitney's only community project. Children here are active year-round, with food drives and even saluting our veterans on Veterans Day. Just last month, they welcomed veterans from the community to their school. Showing pride is about being respectful and overall just being a decent person. And if you're caught showing pride, well, that can get you sent to the principal's office for pizza.
That means that they've been doing good things, and they deserve pizza with the principal because they've been caught with doing good.
Good things are also going on in the classroom as well. There's a lot of hard work going on, no matter what grade level. Even though it may look like these students are just talking a bit in class, they're working in small groups, doing math problems, or figuring out a plot point in a new reading project. Showing pride is about doing well in school and making sure that the work you do, well, that it's fun.
I like a lot of stuff. It's a great school. My favorite thing is probably, actually, it's all too good.
So let's think about this.
But to make everything so good, you have to have a lot of grownups involved as well, not just teachers, but moms and dads.
It's not just about learning, but they do really focus on that and really excelling in that. But it's about the person, about making sure everybody feels safe and a part of something and happy.
So if you show pride in something, you do really care about it. Pride in your community, pride in your schoolwork, pride in yourself for trying to make things better. It's at the heart of what they're trying to do at Whitney Elementary. It's something to shout about. Louder! One more time! That's this week's Cool School in Strongsville.
Oh, they want us to come up.
Everybody's running the gauntlet tonight. Come on.
Congratulations so much. Oh, I would thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you on behalf of the veterans.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Oh, well, thank you.
Make sure to get some pizza.
Okay. Thank you so much for all you did on this. Thank you so much for all you did on this. It's so good to see you again.
Thank you, Debbie. Thank you, Eileen, for being here. And I tweeted out, I was in Debbie's classroom earlier today, I tell you what, I've heard a lot of fourth graders play recorders over the years. Unvarying degrees of success, but I tell you what, man, your kids knocked it out of the park. That was great today. Just two phenomenal examples of our staff here, so thank you for being here. The last recognition presentation we have is City Council President Duke Southworth, as well as City Council Member Jim Carbone are here for a presentation of the City of Strongsville flag, so.
I was just telling Jim, I realize this is your last meeting of the year, and you might want us to go quickly. So I am being appreciative of your time and all the things that you guys do. And you've had a great year. Think about it, you got a levy passed. Over the weekend, I had relatives from Homestead Falls play in the middle school and email me just how impressed they were. And so Duke Evans had this wonderful idea of showing solidarity between the city and the schools, and I think we found the most appropriate flag. It does have, it's a City of Strongsville flag that flew in our council chambers, and on it, you have the Strongsville Mustang. And I think that really is appropriate, and especially with the message of solidarity. I think this would be a perfect flag, with your permission, to fly in your future school board meetings. I do also want to take issue, though.
Uh-oh. We would be honored.
Recently, in the Strongsville Post, a couple of school board members said in response to a question, favorite Christmas movie? Nobody said Die Hard.
Rudolph, the original.
Rudolph. I do think Carl said The Christmas Vacation, which was great, but Die Hard certainly top five.
Top five. I would say that.
But Jimmy, I don't... I do also want to take issue, though. Recently, in the Strongsville Post, a couple of school board members said, in response to a question, favorite Christmas movie? Nobody said Die Hard. I do think Carl said The Christmas Vacation, which was great, but Die Hard certainly top five.
Duke, when you came up with the idea about the flag, it was unbelievable. And especially after what we went through with the, with the bond and to be able to collect those funds with the passion, the heart, and the drive that you had, it's much appreciated by City Council.
There we go. We truly do have a wonderful relationship with the city and appreciate. There we go. We truly do have a wonderful relationship with the city and greatly appreciate all that, that you do in support of us and the work we do and, and hope you see the support that we give the city and the mayor as well. So thank you, this is, this is wonderful and we've got the poll on order to, to have it in the back of our, our board meeting room as well.
Thank you Duke, thank you Jimmy for, for that flag that we got that, like you said, indicates the solidarity. When George and I were running three, four years ago, one of the things the community had been through, some pretty traumatic times. And one of the things that was important for us and for the board was that we are one Strongsville. We're one city, our schools are an integral part of what we are as a city. And so it's important to us on this board, I think I speak for Carl on the board, that we have a close relationship with the other governing body in our city, which is our city council and our mayor. And I think we built that relationship and it's very productive for both sides and for all the folks who work in our school district. We have a very good relationship. And we take it a step further. While we were looking around to build that solidarity, it occurred to me that we had a missing thing in the middle here, which was our state flag, because we're also part of the state of Ohio. So I had asked State Senator Tom Patton if he could please take a look at maybe donating a couple of flags to our district as well. And he came through in flying colors, I wish he could have been here tonight, but he's busy as always. He did present us a couple of state flags at no cost. All of these, all these flags came to us, donated. And the certificate, very nice presentation that they sent up from the Capitol, says that this flag was flown at the Ohio State House on November 8th, 2016, in honor of Strongsville School District and is provided to you with the cooperation of the Capitol Square Review and Advisory Board. And it's signed by Senator Patton. And Mr. Reibach, I'll give this to you for display here. We also got one for the high school, which Mr. Smithberger told me he received yesterday and is thrilled with it. And I guess afterwards, if anybody wants to take a look at this, you're more than welcome to. But here you go Cameron, state flag.
Thank you Duke for all your work in coordinating not only the efforts, you know, here, but at the, the Pacatan Stadium. It truly has been a wonderful addition to our buildings and our facilities, so thank you for all your efforts.
You're welcome.
And Mr. Neso, I know the next thing is my superintendent's report to the committee or community, but really all the prior items encapsulated what I wanted to share this month. I don't think we need to share that winter break is in a few weeks, I'm sure people have that marked on their calendar. So that would also conclude my report to the community.
All right, well excellent. Thank you very much Duke and Jimmy for the flags and Mr. Patton for the flags. Looking forward to flying them up back here. One of those, do we have to increase our, our flag pole fund or we're okay?
We're okay.
We're okay.
Okay, excellent. So with that, we move on to public comment. I don't see any, uh-oh. You do have a slip here, so state your name, address, purpose. Jim Carbone, 12462 Saddle Brook Lane. Oh, you're limited to three minutes. It'll be tough for you. I just want to sing, this is the last board meeting, I wanted to congratulate you all from Cameron, Jennifer, to the board on an excellent job this year. There's been many, many accomplishments and I'm very, very proud to be a part of that with you. Where, where we've come from, it's just amazing. And to know and to be able to work with each one of you and, and knowing that your heart is in the right direction, I really appreciate that and I'm honored to work with all of you. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Anybody who'd like to, the rest of this meeting is going to get a tad boring, so anybody who'd like to. We appreciate all the work, thank you very much.
Merry Christmas.
Okay, that brings us to the treasurer's report.
Thank you, Mr. Neso. I have a few items for your consideration tonight. The, the first item is item A, tax advancement. This is an annual routine, annual routine resolution that we do every year to participate in the county's tax advance program. Essentially, they send us the taxes as we, as they receive them rather than waiting till the settlement date. Exhibit A, the schedule could be found when those dates for advancement are. Items B, C, and D all go together. It's the calendar year 2017 premium renewals for our medical prescription insurance, dental insurance, and vision insurance. Medical prescription, we saw a 5% increase from the current year. Last year was a 3% increase. The 5% increase is a savings to, to our budget. We anticipated a 10% savings in our, or 10% increase in our five-year forecast. And dental and vision, they remain the same, so it's a 0% increase. So what that means, how it impacts financially is this year we're going to realize, because it's a calendar year, it's a half or fiscal year, $260,000 savings. Next year, a $600,000 savings. And so on compounds over the life of the forecast is going to reduce our expenses by $2.8 million in the five-year forecast. And those premium rates can be.
So the, the 5% for this year, you're saying those savings as you go out in the out-years, that's if every year after that is at 5%, correct? Or is that?
Well, no, still in the five-year forecast, I still have every year projected at 10%, but because this amount only increased by 5% and 10%, so now you're increasing it 10% off of this amount and not the 10% I had forecasted. So that's where we're, that's where the savings would be. So the following years, if we have another savings, then that would generate.
More.
And the premium rates can be found in exhibits B, C, and D. Item E, Ohio School Board's Legal Fund Assistance. This is again, a routine and annual resolution that we do every year to participate in the Ohio School Board's Legal Assistant Fund. It's for school board members in the event that any consultation is needed. The cost for this service is $250. It also found exhibit E. Exhibit F, grant approval. This is accepting a grant from the Strongsville Education Foundation for $7,500 for a Makerspace equipment at Kinsner Elementary. Item G, Student Activity Program Budget and Purpose and Goals revisions. This is to increase Fund 19, the Kinsner Elementary Grant, the $7,500 for the Maker, for the Makerspace equipment, to spend those dollars. Middle school, the music department, they had a successful fundraiser more than anticipated. I'll touch on that a little bit later on another item, but it's increasing their, increasing their budgets to their cash and revenue amounts. Same thing with the Letterman's Club is increasing their cash to the, increasing their budget to their cash. And at the high school, the associate Hispanicas, just a revision to their purpose and goals. Item H, which is found in exhibit G, is the appropriation adjustment for those items I just mentioned in item G. And my last item is item I. This is to increase purchase orders over $3,000. Anything under $3,000, I have the authority to do so. Anything over $3,000, they require board approval. And this goes to the music department's fundraiser, the middle school. They had a very successful cookie dough and candy fundraiser. It went above and beyond expectations. They, they generated $87,000 in revenue in cookie, cookie dough and candy. To pay, to pay the invoices, those invoices tallied up $55,000, so they netted a little over $30,000 to be put back into their program. The purchase orders were not adjusted prior to the invoices coming in, that's why this item requires budget approval. And that concludes my report.
George, a question for you. And just from my understanding, because I understand, back in item G, the middle school orchestra band vocal music and Letterman's Club. So your increase is in the center column, then you're moving it further to the right. Is this all through fundraising or are we increasing funding from their budget to the general fund?
No, these, these 300 accounts is their student activities, student fundraising accounts.
Okay, perfect, just so I understand.
The revenue they brought in from this fundraiser, now they can increase their budget to pay the bills.
Any local dentist should be really thrilled about that fundraiser.
It's amazing how successful it was. I mean, it really, I mean, it went off the charts, good. You know, that's crazy, that's, that's really good.
And I talked to this vendor, the new area, he's a local small business and he, he deals with a lot of schools in the area. And he said he's never seen anything like it in, in his years of, of doing the fundraising.
That's awesome.
That middle school rocks.
How much in cookies did you buy?
I know there's some in my freezer.
And that concludes my report, if there's no other questions. Hope everyone has a happy holidays and Happy New Year.
Superintendent's report, I have a three memorandum of understanding with the Strongsville Education Association for your consideration and timely information. The first one addresses early release days and other schedule changes. So in our contract with the teachers for elementary level, it says specifically, here's the times they should have duties. When we have an early release day, that changes that time. When we have a two-hour delay, if we ever do, that changes that time. So this memorandum basically says, whenever we flex that schedule, teachers will be required to do their duties no more than 30 minutes before school or after school. And it could be found in exhibit H and that needs a separate vote, Mr. Neso.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you Duke, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you Jane. Any discussion? Treasurer, take role.
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Neso?
Yes.
Mr. Grozine?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Number two is, the state has come out recently with a mandatory evaluation of school counselors. We've talked about OTES, we have OPAS, now we have OSAS.
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 I like OSAS.
So this came out, you remember, a few meetings ago, the board had to adopt board policy on the evaluation of school counselors by September 30th. We did that. Jenny, in collaboration with our school counselors, we provided training. So this is the MOU, to add to our contract, the language that specifically addresses that our school counselors will be evaluated based on the Ohio School Counselor Evaluation System rather than the system we're currently using. And this, it could be found in exhibit I and this also needs a separate vote.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you for your motion, Duke, thank you for your second, George. One discussion, one question. This OSAS, is it, is this evaluation process better or worse than what we had in existence before?
Well, I'll let Jenny talk about specifically about it, but the reality was, is our guidance counselors. Our guidance counselors developed our last evaluation system off of what was being done in other states, which was really similar to what this was.
Oh, okay.
But Jenny's gone through the trainings.
Our, our rubric was probably more detailed than the one we got from the state, but at the same time, our counselors were so proactive that their rubric that they, that we were using already was so mirrored toward this new one, so it was very easy to, to go from it. The only other thing that it includes is, it includes a growth metric. It's part of one of the standards, the teachers all have growth scores that they're accountable for, so now the counselors also will have a growth metric. And one example would be something like compensing lessons, that they're doing it and they're seeing a difference and showing growth in kids. So that's the, the part of it. There's also walkthroughs that they can, that they can now have before it was just one observation. And then the last part that's new is that they will be reported into our state system just like the teachers are.
Okay, thank you. Treasurer, take role.
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Grozine?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Neso?
Yes.
Motion passes.
The last MOU is one we talked about at our last meeting about adding JV lacrosse for girls and boys as a paid position. That could be found in exhibit J. The rate of that is commensurate with other similar sports. And that also needs a separate vote for your approval.
Have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you George for the first, thank you Duke for the second. Any discussion?
The only thing I'd say, I'd like to say is that I'm so proud of our lacrosse program. It's come so far in such a short time from a couple of years. And it's really good that the administration and the schools support it. It's a great sport for our kids, very good for physical fitness, and looking forward to seeing some championship teams from lacrosse very quickly.
George, take role. Mr. Grozine?
Yes.
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Neso?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Excellent.
Thank you. The next item is a discussion item. At our January 5th organizational meeting, the board will officially vote on board meeting dates for next year. You have a draft in front of you, so the board wants to look at the draft calendar that we're working on. There has been some discussion, now that our buildings are done, renovations are completed, do we want to go to a few buildings for this upcoming 2017 board meeting schedule? So just open it up to the board for discussion as to whether or not you would like to visit some of our buildings as a matter of holding either our work session or regular meetings.
I think we, we talked a little bit about it, the, the agenda review, but we talked at the last board meeting as well. And I think we've got some incredible facilities to show off, right? So the preschool is, you know, it's been redone and it's, it's, it's great. The, you know, we've got the high school, the, the media center will soon be completed ahead of schedule, under budget, and it looks beautiful, I walked through it the other day. And then we have the new middle school, of course, right? So I think, I think we could, I don't want to, I don't want to make it so it's confusing for people so that the meetings are always jumping around, but I think it'd be good to, you know, visit each one of those at least once next year. I don't know what the rest of the board members think, but I think, actually, I know what you think. You're on board, but, so what do you guys think about that?
I have just one thing on it, I, I agree with you, those three facilities would be nice to visit. However, I don't want to be jumping around until we have a operational audiovisual capability, meaning the truck is fixed. Mr. Benson.
We have one being checked by a mechanic, right Scott? So we should, we should be, you know, if, if we look out a few months after the first of the year, we should have everything in order to be, to meet that criteria, we're be able to retrofit the, the truck. Just so everybody's aware, the, the production truck that Scott had broke, died, and the parts are no longer able to be purchased to replace it, so we've been looking for a new TV or, or production truck. And we found one, it's being looked at by the mechanic, you know, looking at how long it's going to take to retrofit with our equipment. So, Mr. Benson, I know you're behind the camera, but would you say by March would be a good time, we'd be able to be up and running?
Yes, I think that we can use the downtime after Christmas, if the vehicle checks out to do all retrofit.
Okay. So anything after March, I think we would be good to travel.
Can we just make it easy and say we want to visit those three places and leave it to the administration to pick those times and dates?
Jane, your favor?
Yeah, I just was concerned as to how difficult it was to transport all the equipment and camera when we don't have students helping any longer. Are we going to be involving students again or is, I mean, how time crunched are we with personnel to do this?
I think if we do a couple, that's manageable. We've talked about it internally a little bit, you know, as I think the mention was before, we don't want to be going to a different building every time or, you know, traveling all over. But if we look at a couple different buildings throughout the year. To answer your first question, yes. You know, Scott's been working with our high school and middle school administration to get both of those TV studios up. And once those are up and, you know, we have the announcements at the high school, but specifically the middle school. Once those are up and running, we will start to build that student base to help, help out with the different broadcasts we have across the. have across the district.
Okay. I just would be concerned, too, all those facilities have a lot of demands on their times and spaces, so I don't know how practical it will be to, you know, you use the high school or the middle school.
Even if we did it in the summertime, but like I said, leading into these guys to make the right decisions and.
So what I can do is coordinate between the different cameras, or cameras, yeah, not cameras, uh, buildings.
Oh, yeah, they're from Cameron's.
Yeah, coordinate, uh, with them and see, and then for, uh, the organizational session, I can have a draft for you with some ideas of where those buildings will be, and we can, you guys can vote on it then, if that's okay.
Okay.
All right, perfect. And then the last item under number five is the leadership handbook. Um, the, the board voted on this, uh, a few months ago in the summer, um, due to the Fair Labor Standards Act, even though it's being repealed right now, there are some aspects that are, are not under repeal that we needed to add to the leadership handbook. Um, and that, uh, has, that section of the handbook has been, um, updated, revised. The, the dates of, uh, of enacting the handbook are still the same. Uh, Mr. Neso, we did forget to put an asterisk here. Uh, this should be a consent calendar item, um, so please, as we, uh, as we go to the consent calendar, we just have to make note that, that, uh.
I'll add an asterisk.
Thank you. And that concludes timely information, unless there are questions from the board. Uh, we do not have any items under business services or curriculum this month. We do have one item under student services. It's an annual, uh, item, uh, Cuyahoga County Interagency Agreement, which allows us to collaborate with different Cuyahoga County, um, agencies regarding the delivery of services and transition for children and families for the sixteen, seventeen school year. It's in exhibit K. And if there's no questions there, uh, Jenny Pelco with the Human Resource Report.
Thank you, Mr. Reba. I have the following items for your consideration under Human Resources this evening. Under E one, we have two resignations of non-certificated staff. Under E two, we have the following appointments of our non-certificated staff. We have a few more certificated, uh, substitute appointments, and we also have a few more non-certificated, uh, substitutes. We have, uh, the appointment of Renee Strong, um, for a certificated, uh, supplemental contract as, uh, another instrumental director at Strongsville Middle School. We also have the certificated supplemental contracts appointments. And we have a few more of our, uh, non-certificated supplemental contracts. Under E three, I have the following continuing contract recommendations, non-certificated staff. And for E four, I am going to head to the podium and ask Lori Sinek to join me up there. There you go. I'd like to introduce to you our new, uh, su- transportation supervisor, Mrs. Lori Sinek. Uh, she will be replacing, uh, Marty Austin here in a few more weeks, I believe, right? So Lori has been with the district since two thousand thirteen, if I'm correct, August of two thousand thirteen, and she has done some amazing things for our district. Uh, she participates on several committees, several district-level committees. Uh, just this past year, she organized a job fair for the very first time that I can remember. Uh, and if you saw those signs around town that bus drivers needed, that was Lori's work, uh, that we definitely needed some bus drivers. We had a lot of split routes, uh, for our elementary students that we, we needed to stop because elementary students were getting home late, and she reduced that by ninety-three percent, I believe. So that is awesome. Our elementary students are getting home earlier now. Uh, she participates also, it is a regional director for OPAT. I don't know what that stands for, Lori.
Ohio Association of Pupil Transportation.
Okay, very good. So, uh, she does the bus rodeo as well, so she's involved in her organizations and, and therefore gets a lot of ideas to bring back to Strongsville. Uh, just this past fall, she organized the Fill the Bus Campaign for the Strongsville Food Bank, uh, and she overwhelmingly participated in the greet and treat. Uh, she encouraged her entire department to come, so we had many drivers there transporting the food from inside to outside to fill that bus, and she brought along the little school bus as well, uh, and the kids just really enjoyed that at the, at the event. So we're very excited to have Lori on board. Um, we're excited for the things that are coming for our transportation department, and, you know, every so often, she even jumps on the bus and drives when needed. So Lori, congratulations to you. Thank you. Yeah, if you wanna say something, oh, okay.
If you want, I'm speechless.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Lori.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Keep up the good work.
Congratulations, Lori.
Excellent.
Continuing under E four, we have one change in status of a non-certificated food service. Under E five, I have a salary upgrade for non-certificated personnel. Under E six, uh, we have two more joining our auditorium light and sound crew, which is, I commend these, uh, this group for really working hard to make sure our auditorium is working as it should, both auditoriums, both at the high school and the middle school. They're learning a lot about lights and sound. Ian is part of that group, uh, so, uh, I know it's a lot of work, but, uh, it's amazing, and the middle school concert was a testament last night. Uh, under E seven, we, I have the following non-certificated medical leaves. And under E eight, I have volunteers for our win- winter indoor track program, and then more, uh, chaperone volunteers. And that concludes my report, unless you have any questions for me.
Nope, we're good.
Okay.
And there's nothing under technology, so that concludes the superintendent's report.
That brings us to, um, Richard on Polaris.
Thank you. Um, I have a very important Polaris announcement and a warning. Uh, the Christmas cookie bake sale is ongoing, and for thirty dollars, you will get over seventy different cookies in one box, so it's quite a deal. Uh, if you go to Polaris.edu, the ma- the main website, from there, uh, select services, and from services, you choose the, uh, the name of the restaurant is Maison Place, and there you'll see the link for the over, uh, for the order form. If you enjoy baking your own cookies, God love you, but if you just wanna get your cookies, it's a great way to support, uh, the baking and pastry arts program, and, um, I can't recommend it enough from personal experience. And the warning is tomorrow is the last day to place your order, and make sure it's postmarked. So go to the website, download the form, make sure it's in the mail tomorrow, and you're all set. And that completes my Polaris report.
All right, you wanna go right into legislation?
I do. Um, the one thing I did wanna highlight is, uh, the legislature is in their lame duck session. They're getting ready to, uh, uh, go home for the holidays also, and Senate Bill two three five is probably the one that is most important for our consideration. And, uh, it started in the Senate, and it was going to allow, uh, different developers to, um, withhold increases in their property taxes. The idea was to encourage development of properties and encourage development, uh, economic development throughout the state of Ohio, but since the school districts everywhere in Ohio are so tied to property tax, it really does, uh, affect or could affect, uh, school districts drastically. And the, uh, the big issue with it is, is, you know, someone could purchase that property and avoid any increases in property taxes, the way the, the wa- the way the original bill was written, uh, almost forever. Um, and, uh, and there was no, uh, vehicle in the, uh, original proposal, uh, to balance that. The House heard it, they've made some, uh, changes to make it better. I think it's still, uh, it does allow the cities, it forces the developers, the real estate developers, to get approval from the, the local cities, but it still leaves the school district out of the conversation, and, and we really should be in the conversation. Uh, nobody wants, you know, the idea to, to grow and develop is something that everyone supports, but, uh, it, we should be in the conversation. The, uh, the House made some changes. The thing that is, uh, concerning is this is a lame duck session, this is happening very quickly, and even though the changes occurred in the House, the final bill, they could take the House changes, they could take the original Senate changes. It also happens to be the Christmas, uh, tree bill, and so everything and anything that, uh, wants to get done before the end of the year is being added. Literally, there, they, uh, it was in testimony or committee today, it'll continue to have changes tomorrow, but it is something that's important, and I ask people to, um, take the time to call and let their legislator know that, uh, it will impact the district, and, and please take care of it the right way. And that con- concludes my report.
And which, what was that, phone number?
It is currently amended substitute Senate Bill two three five, and there are so many different various amendments on this in addition to the, uh, the development por- portion of it, but the, uh, the real estate development portion, and, and again, um, the problem is, is that it, from, from the Senate level, um, it's a laudable goal, but it really could hurt, uh, harm school districts, uh, the way it is currently written.
More good news out of Columbus. Okay, uh, that brings us to city council. I believe, Duke, you attended the meetings.
Yes, I did. Um, it was a very short meeting, uh, this Monday. Uh, one thing to let folks know is that some of the rental rates and charge rates at the rec center may be increasing. Um, you'd have to check with the rec center or with the council folks to know how much that might be. Probably the rec center's best place to look that up. Um, and also, uh, Mr. Carbone, who was here tonight, also gave us a shout out, uh, for the district, for the board, for the district, and all of the, uh, teachers at the city council meeting, commending us for a good job in twenty sixteen, and, uh, all the support staff as well. So I think that was really nice, and again, it goes to that tie between our city and our schools, so. And that was about it. Um, there was not even any, there was one public comment, and it had nothing to do with us.
That's excellent. Um, that brings us to Strongsville PTA.
No education foundation?
No, no, I don't think, there wasn't an education, I don't believe.
Thank you, Mr. Neso. Uh, PTA Council hosted their, um, annual holiday luncheon for all of the, um, principals and secretaries and units, and I was unable to attend, but, um, it was, um, evidently, like it always is, a very beautiful afternoon.
I was able to go, and it was, uh, it was really nice.
Yes. Um, also, this, uh, month, PTA's been always busy, like they always are. They collected blankets in conjunction with Key Club for the Strongsville Food Bank, um, that, um, supported a hundred and twenty families in Strongsville. They had a successful grant submissions, um, by staff members of the district, and they awarded six thousand dollars worth of grants, and the specific list on what they awarded will be following next month. They hosted a positive behavior assembly, which goes in conjunction with, um, uh, what we heard about earlier with your program. It was called, um, Every Child Can Be a Hero, and they had a magician go to all of the elementary schools, and that was very well received. And then they had Justin Bachmann come to, um, Strongsville Middle School and gave a presentation there. So, um, they're very actively supporting all of the children in our district at all levels. And that concludes my PTA council report.
Student achievement?
Okay, student achievement. We have, um, some pictures from this month's student achievement. It's, um, taken at Maraski Elementary School. Students in Mrs. Cipriani's fifth grade science classes were presented with a dangerous decibels presentation on October twenty-seventh, and the program is designed to teach the fifth graders the concepts of noise-induced hearing loss prevention through a fun, interactive fifty-minute presentation. Students explored the science of sound, the way it travels, how to protect their hearing for years to come, and it was delivered by the Cleveland Clinic audiologists and audiology doctoral students. This is an example of Mrs. Cipriani incorporating a science lesson with a health lesson and utilizing a community partner for engagement within the classroom. So it kinda speaks to everything we're trying to accomplish in our district, which is very remarkable. Um, they, you know, also, it, um, covers the standards that, um, we are trying to get across. Starting in kindergarten through second grade, they learn that objects produce sound. So they're reinforcing what they learned in kindergarten through second grade. And then, as they move to third to fifth grade, they're supposed to learn that sound is a form of energy and that it behaves in a predictable way. So it reinforced that concept through a fun, interactive presentation. And then they had to identify the source of a specific sound. So it, it really, um, is learning when they don't even realize they're learning. And, uh, her students really enjoyed the program, and some comments included, "It created awareness about the many things that can hurt and affect my hearing." The presentation was interactive and informative. One child said, "I didn't know that noises over eighty-five decibels would have a time limit as to how long you can listen to it." Now, you may ask, what's eighty-five decibels? Well, an average typical conversation is sixty decibels, so you'd have to be listening to something louder than that for as much as five minutes for an extended time, and it could affect your hearing. And if a noise is, is eighty-five decibels or lower, you can listen to it for eight hours. So I'm not sure, um, I guess they could listen to their teacher for eight hours because it's less than eighty-five decibels. So I'd like to thank Mrs. Cipriani for bringing this engaging lesson to our students at Maraski.
Excellent, thank you.
And that concludes my student achievement.
Excellent, and there was not a finance committee meeting? Policy committee?
You can take that. No, that's okay.
So we met, uh, a week ago, um, and reviewed a bunch of, uh, policies. We also reviewed our, uh, our policy for licensing and, uh, came up with, uh, some guidelines, uh, to license, uh, and, and collect royalties for our, uh, our new Mustang, uh, logo, our athletic logo, and they will be on first reading in January.
January fifth.
January fifth, and we can then, uh, look forward to voting on, um, through two meetings after that.
All right, thank you. Uh, facility committee?
Nothing.
All right, we're good. Um, that brings us to the consent calendar on fifteen. Um, all items with an asterisk are voted on in one vote. We need to add item ten A five, needs an asterisk, um, add it to the consent calendar. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, George.
Second.
Second by Duke. Any discussion on any items? Uh, George, take roll.
Mr. Grozan?
Yes.
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Neso?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. That brings us to Board of Education, other. Um, I don't know if anybody has any other, other than, it's almost Christmas time.
I have a couple others.
Oh, a couple others.
Uh, Christmas in the Village is going on this weekend at, um, the Strongsville Historical Society. It's Saturday and Sunday from two to five. All of the houses, buildings are open, with the exception of the barn, and, um, they're all decorated beautifully. Santa is even there, and, uh, Mrs. Claus has cookies and punch, so, um, if you have nothing else going on this weekend from two to five, stop by, it's free. So, um, that's, um, Christmas in the Village. And then I just, as an aside, um, the Love and Logic program that was discussed earlier, I had taken the Love and Logic class when my daughter was in kindergarten. She graduated last year, so that's how long ago it was. And it's not just for parents with preschoolers or young kids. They give you techniques for how to deal with teenagers and some of the difficult things that teenagers might put parents through. So it really is a valuable course, so if, if you're at all able to, um, participate in that, I highly recommend it. And that's it.
Thank you, Jane. Um, that brings us to meeting note.
I'd like, but one other. Yeah, just, just, real quick, I'd just like to commend Cameron, Jenny, and the Yeah, just, just real quick, I'd just like to commend Cameron, Jenny, and the entire staff, the support staff, the teachers, for, uh, a really good two thousand and sixteen. Wish you all a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year on behalf of the board, and my fellow board members, and George, too. That report you produced this year is amazing.
Thanks.
And, uh, you know, it's, it's good to stop and say thank you every once in a while, and appreciate all the blessings we have.
Thank you, Duke.
You're welcome.
Uh, that brings us to, um, we have a Board of Education organization meeting on January fifth. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Duke. Second by?
The second.
By Jane, thank you very much. Any discussion? George, take roll.
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Neso?
Yes. I mean, it'll be here on July fifth at, uh, seven o'clock.
January. Appointment of president pro temp for next year.
I move that Mr. Neso is the president pro temp.
I'll second.
Second by, um, any other discussion? George, will you take roll?
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Grozan?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Neso?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Excellent. Um, we do have need for executive session.
Under three items, Mr. Neso, uh, to consider the compensation of a public employee or official, to prepare for negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment, and to discuss details relative to the security arrangements and emergency response protocols for the Board of Education.
I do have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Duke.
Second.
Thank you, Jane. Um, any discussion? George, take roll.
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Neso?
Yes.
Mr. Grozan?
Yes.
Enter an executive session.
Ten thirty, or eight thirty-five. We're gonna take a two-hour break, and then we're gonna go in. Everybody wait, we'll be back. No, actually, we won't be back. There'll be no business afterwards. So you can wait if you'd like, but I would advise highly against it. Except for you. Merry Christmas to everyone, and, uh, have a great year.